Stay. Good. All right.
Recording in progress.
I'll call to order the Tuesday, April twenty fifth, twenty twenty three Town Council Committee of the Whole meeting to order at six thirty two. Okay, all councils are present with the exception of Council Parker and McBride. We expect McBride shortly. Um, I'm not sure I've heard from Council Parker. Calendar and Communications, Council Cassieri.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening. I've received various communications regarding property reuse, Mystic Education Center, Public Act twenty one dash one, uh, FOIA complaint update, an invitation from Tammy Dela Cruz from Community Speaks Out to the Students for Recovery Fest on Friday, this Friday, April twenty eighth from four to six thirty. And on June twenty fourth, Community Speaks Out is hosting a recovery and family picnic at Washington Park from one to six. July eighth is a five K memorial walk for Ashley Pila. And September thirtieth is Community Speaks Out's annual sober softball tournament tournament from nine to nine at Washington Park. I received an email regarding RTM member decorum, uh, cell towers, emails about a new FOIA commission complaint, GOT space, uh, Branford complaint updates, and a notice that the Public Safety Committee meeting will be May ninth at five thirty PM. And I just wanna say a very quick thank you to our first responders, police, fire, and EMS for their service in response to the accident on the Gold Star. Uh, many of our Groton Public Safety personnel and many of my former coworkers across the bridge, um, responded, so thank you to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Franco.
Thank God. Thank you. I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Jones.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I also received the same emails, um, that other councils have received. Um, this weekend I went and attended the Earth Day Expo at the Groton Library, um, which was very well attended by, um, and along with Council Jacome and, um, from Boots, Information, our own Conservation Department and, um, Resiliency, who was sitting here in the, in the council chamber, were there, plus lots of vendors, um, really well attended event. Um, I'm surprised, I think it's the, I think it's the first one and, uh, it was really, it was very well done, so, thank you.
Thank you. Just to note, Council Parker has joined us at six thirty five. Council Borlon.
Um, thank you. Um, I too also wanna send a, you know, uh, sincere appreciation to our first responders as well as, uh, you know, uh, people that are not signed up to be first responders who responded on the side of the road that day on the bridge that, um, selfishly put theirself at risk by stopping to help, um, people that they probably didn't even know on the side of the road that day along with the first responders. Um, and a heart, you know, felt to Wally, who I knew through the community, um, in Ledgerd, uh, did go to Ledgerd for some time, and to his wife Elaine, who I've known for many, many years, uh, throughout the community, so. Um, and on that same day, there was another loss over by the Two A Bridge, uh, don't remember exactly where, but there was another accident, uh, that had a fatality. Um, it, it just really, you know, puts things in perspective when there's a townwide emergency and the importance of patience and understanding to get through and navigate through the town, um, and the impact that it had on us locally. Um, so just, you know, a big shout out to all the first responders from wherever they responded, um, in town, the city, and surrounding towns, as well as people who pitched a hand by helping, you know, folks that they, you know, just could not drive past and jumped out of their car to help. Um, so definitely, um, the community outpour and help for that family, for Elaine and her, her four children are definitely gonna be needed. Um, I attended a property reuse committee meeting, uh, last week. I attended a board, uh, meeting this Monday. Um, I had some of the same communications as Council Cassieri had stated. Um, we also did receive the GOT space one with the Kim Drellick comments. Um, she was asking a term, a term in there, I guess, to the town manager. I can ask up later. Um, I just have clarification on the term she was asking, what the answer was. Um, and, uh, what else did I receive? I did send a email to the town manager about doing a ride along with the local police department, um, and received a response back from that. Um, what else did I have here? Things about the cell tower in Noank, um, things, the report about Branford, um, did receive the information that was forwarded from Juliet, Council Parker, regarding an NAACP event that's gonna be held. Um, and I think that's all I have right now. Also, just wanna restate that there is a fundraiser gala, Gala Roaring Twenties put on by Noank Community Support Services that will be at the Branford House on May nineteenth. Everyone's invited, um, and the tickets are, um, on the, the Facebook page. Also wanna send, um, you know, congratulations to the wrestler at Fitch High School. Uh, now, I might be saying his name wrong, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me. It's Naz, they call him Naz, I believe, Nazara Matthews up at Fitch. He's a wrestler who finished really well in New England and did quite well in states and, um, was recognized in the newspaper by the day, um, as one of their athletes that they kinda highlighted. Um, so just really important to, uh, recognize our local athletes when we can. Thank you.
Council Westerveld.
Uh, thank you. Um, I received, uh, emails and also phone communications on the Property Reuse Committee. Um, I also attended, um, the meeting last week for that. Um, also had a number of calls about the Mystic Educational Center and what may, may or may not be happening up there. Um, I'd also like to, uh, thank the first responders for all that they did last week. It was pretty harrowing, I imagine, everything that I saw. Um, and Town Manager, I'd like to thank you for keeping us all informed. Um, it was a, certainly a help for me since I have to come through there to get home. Um, and a lot of my family and others were asking questions and I was able to, you know, relay some of the stuff that the Town Manager had given us. So I think that bit of, uh, outreach and communication helped a lot. But thank you to everybody who, uh, who performed in that. Take care.
Council Jacome.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, similar correspondence as the other counselors. Um, I did, as Council Jones has also said, I did attend the Earth Day Expo. I believe the first of its kind, uh, great event. I think it was a great turnout. Uh, definitely learned a lot from the many of the organizations there. And, um, last Tuesday, did have my first, uh, meeting for, with the Town Council Personnel Appointments Committee and I, as well as all the other councils, I did wanna thank, uh, the Town of Brian, the first responders, and of course, the Town Manager for keeping us informed. Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Council Parker.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that was, um, a, a busy day. Thank you to Town Manager for keeping us informed. Um, I was at work trying to do my part at the other end, not there at the site, but everyone did a wonderful job the best they could. And it's an interesting experience when you go through, uh... The town pulled together, towns pulled together to work on this and did a wonderful job. Have to give. The state came down as fast as they could and wanted to thank all the people that were stuck in traffic. Thank you for your patience. And we understand that this lives were affected and we hope that people can pay attention to driving, be very careful, um, be aware of your surroundings. And I know there are times you cannot, and I pray for the families affected, as well as the first responders, everyone that was there, is that type of tragedy could affect you later down the road. Um, I have nothing further to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'll just echo a lot of what the other council said. Um, my condolences to the family of the, of the driver that, that we lost. Um, I was heartened to see that his family's GoFundMe page was, was funded. Um, but obviously still, everything helps, so if you can go and find that and donate what you can, that would be, that'd be, that'd be great. Um, and of course, thanks to the many first responders from the whole region, um, and state, um, that were able to minimize the damage, um, and, and loss of life. So, uh, thank, thank you for all that. Council Borlon.
I just also wanted to add too, I mean, it just seems like there's been a lot of loss lately in the community. I know New London did have a little vigil out in front of their town hall and stuff. I know that they also did lose a, a high school student there, a seventeen year old girl, um, that they also are Groton residents. Um, she did attend the, the Magnet School in New London, so, um, just a, just a lot of loss with in and around New London County, uh, recently. So, just, you know, thoughts and prayers for everybody.
We're on to the approval of minutes. I make a motion to move the, uh, meeting minutes of March twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, and April sixth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Move by Melendez. Yes.
I, I had a question. Did, was there anywhere, I was trying to read them and I didn't see where you documented me coming into the meeting late. So, March twenty eighth's meeting minutes, correct?
March twenty eighth, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. And so the comments. Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Here's unanimous, we eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto new business, alteration of Ascenic Road, one two zero six River Road. That can be found on page twenty. Make a motion to recommend a resolution approving of the alteration to the River Road right of way.
Second. Jones.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. Manager Ver, do you wanna introduce this?
John Ryder will.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, so alteration of Ascenic Road, we had a public hearing on this matter, uh, back on, what was it here? April fourth, um, and this was a previously approved, uh, two lot subdivision. The Town Council had held a public hearing on the previous lot, uh, a couple of years back, gave, uh, approval for that. And their, uh, request to put in a paved driveway apron, meeting all the towns, uh, road and drainage standards, uh, is consistent with other applications like this. Happy to answer any questions. Pretty straightforward, uh, application.
Any discussion? Questions? Council Borlon.
Um, do you feel like all the concerns have been addressed regarding any of it? Or has there been any concerns regarding it at all?
There really weren't any concerns. They met all the, uh, requirements, uh, through our road and drainage standards. Anything that was brought up by staff was addressed.
And then there's, uh, was stated that some of the trees might be taken down. They're gonna try to replant some of those back.
Yes.
Is that the way of understanding? Did you ever find out how many, how many are being taken down or roughly, or?
It might be on the plans. I, yeah, I believe on the plans, they show the number of trees that are being taken down. I don't have an exact number.
Do we know how many they're gonna be replanting? Do we know?
Uh, there are existing stone walls in the vicinity of the curb cut. Those will not be altered as a result of this upgrade, nor will any mature trees of that portion of River Road be affected. So, um, it appears that there will not be any mature trees that are impacted along River Road. I mean, to, you know, clear the lot for where the house is gonna be, there'll have to be some trees taken down there, I, I would assume.
And I know at River Road, a lot of folks, we get a lot of emails and messaging regarding the fact that, you know, it floods all the time, people think that it needs to be repaved. Um, you know, in this particular area, will this cause any more drainage concerns other than the ones that were addressed?
Uh, to my knowledge, this, any development on the lot has to meet all the towns' road and drainage, drainage standards, as well as stormwater runoff for any clearing on the lot, so it, it shouldn't contribute to any additional stormwater runoff on the roadway.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. Here's eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Onto twenty twenty three Neighborhood Assistance Act.
Uh, um, excuse me, I'm sorry. Did you say eight in favor?
Yes, Council McBride is not here.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, couldn't say.
No, it's okay.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Also, just wanna, uh, introduce a somewhat newer member of our staff, uh, with us.
Name is Michelle McRaca. Um, started in August of twenty twenty two. I'm a planner, tool pro-community and neighborhood development.
Yeah. Yeah, he, uh, finished up his PhD from Clemson, focusing on affordable housing and, uh, a real good catch for us and has been a great, uh, contribution to the staff the last few months, so, thanks. So, uh, he's been handling all of our community development block grant and Neighborhood Assistance Act, a lot of our affordable housing, uh, work and implementation later. So, um, you know, uh, every year we come back on the Neighborhood Assistance Act. Uh, this is a state tax credit program. This is not a, a local program. Um, it's not even, uh, like a pass through of funding. This is something that, um, we advertise and assist this application program. We hold a public hearing every year on the applications that we receive, really as a way of recognizing these organizations and their involvement in our community. And again, this is not a traditional grant program. We use the state's application form from their website, but we do a substantial amount of outreach and communication to nonprofits and community organizations to try to get them aware of this funding source that they have to apply for, you know, essentially through the state, but we are, uh, kinda the first touch and pass for that, just to ensure that these are community-based organizations. Um, and again, this is designed to provide funding for municipal and tax credit, uh, tax exempt organizations by providing an opportunity for them to utilize corporate business tax credits for businesses that can make cash contributions to these entities. There's kinda two different programs they can use. Uh, a tax credit equal to a hundred percent of the cash invested is available for businesses that invest in energy conservation projects, and a tax credit equal to sixty percent of the cash invested is available to businesses that invest in programs that provide neighborhood assistance, job training, education. Uh, there's a whole list, um, within our referral and how those, uh, fall. The program has a number of statutory limits, including, uh, nonprofits and businesses must operate under a partnership for this program. The business is limited to receiving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in tax credit annually. A nonprofit organization is limited to receiving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in contributions in the aggregate. A minimum contribution on which credit can be granted is two hundred and fifty dollars, and the program has a five million dollar cap, which if exceeded results in a proration of approved donations. Uh, this year, we've received five applications, uh, just to kinda give you a mark. Last year, we received four. Um, and again, none of this is guaranteed funding, so of the four applications that we did receive last year, um, only ten thousand dollars was actually, uh, received and implemented through one of the programs, because people can apply for it, but then they have to go out and find those, uh, those matching contribution tax, uh, credit dollars for this. So it's something, again, we help make people, uh, aware of the program. We inform them of what's out there. Uh, each year, we're doing more outreach and trying to get more people engaged about it. Um, and I know we have some, some big plans to, uh, step that up over the course of the next year. Uh, tonight, really what we're asking for you to do is to schedule the public hearing for this matter and for June sixth. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council Borlon.
Um, thank you and welcome. It was really nice to meet you. It's great to, welcome on board. Um, from the applicants that applied from last year, are there any, uh, re, uh, people that are reapplying that are currently on the list this year?
No, they are not. Um, there's four applications, um, that are for, um, energy conservation projects. Um, one of them is, uh, programming, um, but none of them are the ones, they have applied in the past, but not the recent, uh, year. Um, the issue, as discussed with some of the applicants in the past, that have not been continuing to apply, some of them have stopped applying, um, are some of the things we're trying to work through and just kinda try to improve the, um, information that they receive and how to best perform in this program.
Yeah. Well, I just wanna thank you guys for your efforts in the fact that, uh, you know, one of the things, you know, since I've been involved, it's sometimes been the same folks getting it, which is great. Um, but it's nice to, you know, one of the things I had really hoped is to see a diversifying of, of, of a pool of applicants, let it be, uh, getting the word out there or, um, however we can, you know, putting it out in the paper, putting it up on social media, but this year it's nice because it is, um, different names and I, and I think it's great to, um, have these funds available if they actually are able to get them. I'm not guaranteed, um, but, um, you know, I've done my research on the agencies here. Um, for full disclosure, I am a member of the Saint Marks Church, which I know is, you know, have to recuse yourself as, uh, people have did it in the past, it wasn't required, but, um, you know, and I, and I just, you know, looked at the outpour from, you know, um, what these agencies do outside of what they do, providing a base. Uh, I know that the Saint Marks provides parking to the public, um, for Mystic when they're in their off hours, as well as, um, the childcare agents, uh, program they have there. Um, they also do, you know, drug and alcohol rehab, like, uh, classes in the evenings there, so. And then with the Thames Valley Council, you know, just obviously, it speaks for itself as well as the Community of Hope. Um, so I just, I think it's great, and it's great to see different names and, um, thank you.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution to schedule a public hearing for the Neighborhood Assistance Act Tax Credit Program on June sixth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Borlon. Any further discussion? Council Jones.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michelle, thank you for, thank, welcome aboard and glad to have you here. Um, just a little bit about the program. So does the, does the town reach out and help, um, these organizations find the matching grants or is that, or how does, how do they get matched up to find the money?
I can speak to that. Um, so what we've started doing or trying to work towards improving our performance as a community in this program is looking at best practices. And how we got to that is, um, the program publishes a report a- annually of businesses that have contributed and business that have applied, organizations that have applied, I mean. And so they publish actually the actual figures of how much was funded for which program. And so, um, part of, um, of the best practices assessment is, um, also asking, um, other planners and other communities how, um, they get their organization to perform as well as they have. And a lot of the feedback that we've got so far is that, um, the best way we as, as, as a, as a liaison in this program is to help the community organizations, is to give them as much information as we can about the program and the type of businesses to approach. Um, we cannot, uh, influence or deter, uh, organizations from applying or, or influencing businesses to collaborate with them, but that's on the organization. Uh, the organization has to do their job to ensure that they package their project very well and present their projects to the types of organizations. So, uh, part of the things John was mentioning, we're trying to do now is, is, is look at the type of businesses in the area. And also an important note that I found, uh, as we were doing this research was that, um, the businesses, uh, do not have to be local, as long as they pay taxes in the state of Connecticut, Connecticut, sorry. Um, and so that's also a mis, uh, understanding that has been, you know, continuous in the past, is that people have tried to contact businesses that are only local, but you can contact anyone in the state. And so those are some of the things we are trying to help organizations understand and then reach out to businesses for, uh, participating in this process.
So that was, that was actually my second question, was can they reach out to any, any business that participates in this program anywhere in the state to get the, the matching funds?
Um, I wouldn't say just participate, businesses that qualify, I guess I would say.
Okay.
So that's even more, right? Not just those that, because some businesses might not know that they, they can participate in the program, um, but they qualify depending on the tax, uh, bracket that they fall under.
So the businesses in lieu of paying their property tax, they contribute to this program and it's, so it can go either way. They can pay it to the, to the property tax, to their local community, or they can pay into this program. Is that?
That goes, it's a state tax.
Yeah, just state tax, okay.
Yeah, and, um... Up to a hundred and fifty thousand, I think John mentioned that, but I, I think, uh, a lot of towns that we looked at when we did early analysis into this program was that some of the organizations that were funded, it wasn't big amounts. It was seven hundred here, a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars, you know what I mean? So it's possible, and so it's important for organizations to know not to just shoot for that big number, but also approach businesses with the smaller amounts too.
And the statewide pool of mon, money was, John, you said, four million?
I think it was five million.
Five million, okay. So that's collected over the whole state and then any, any organ, nonprofit can then apply?
Well, it's not that it's collected, that's the maximum number that people can contribute. So it's not that there's a pot of money that they can go take from the, the folks that apply for this program.
So it's not that there's a pot of money that they can go take from the, the folks that apply for this program, then have to go seek out those businesses to match that up.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Boardwalk?
Um, thanks. Is there, you know, any like posts or anything that you think of like in the future as you guys are collaborating? I know you're newly on board. That, you know, maybe as a town councilor that we maybe could help share or, you know, to kind of, you know, by putting it out there, you know, letting people know that it exists. Is there any like town-wide effort that, you know, maybe we could be a part of or in our own conversations or any like link that we should be sharing, maybe to, you know, help the process?
Yes, I believe our office has tried to reach out to town staff and also different organizations that collaborate with the town, sharing that link. We do have a list of interest groups, which is organizations in the community that are interested in the program that we try to keep informed. The goal of this year is to make sure that we remind the organizations to, you know, get their projects ready, you know, and speak to businesses and, you know, these are the type of things you need to be able to answer when you, we approach the businesses and things of that nature. Other communities have held open sessions to discuss this program. So any organization that's interested, you know, can come in, ask your questions and, you know, we can discuss and kind of shoot ideas around as to how to best approach certain things. But as long as, from a town's perspective, we are not allowed saying go to this business, but not that business, but we can just advise as to how to approach.
Yeah, that, I think that'd be great. I, I would love to see that footprint here for Groton. It would be great to have. I mean, I think there's so much out there that a lot of people aren't aware of. And if there's a way we could open that door and just have, like you said, an information night so they can understand the process, what it is. Obviously, we can't guide them fully, but we can direct them and give them the guidance and that would be great. I think that open forum would be a really cool thing to have here. And, you know, put it up, I don't know. When are the, when does this process start?
So the Department of Revenue Services expects the applications, completed applications by Jan, July 1st. Businesses that are participating in this process need to submit their application form by September 15th of this year. But advice that I get is that people should not wait for those deadlines in, in contacting the businesses. Contact the business right now as soon as possible and, you know, make sure your project, they have it on their scope and they know you're around and you are looking for contributions from them.
Gotcha. Yeah, that'd be great. And I, I mean, I, I can't direct you guys what to do, but I'm just, you know, giving maybe an idea of, yeah, maybe about four months prior to that, putting the feelers out on social media. That way they could be shared broadly and then, you know, then, then leading to a linking date with an open forum night would be awesome. So thank you and welcome on board again.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, well, before, before we vote, just welcome. I know we've met in the past, but it's your first time here. Just welcome from, from the whole council, I'm sure. And I've heard only great things about you and, and, you know, just keep, keep doing a great job. Thank you. All right, seem no further discussion. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That carries eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you. Onto the Long Island Sound Futures Grant 2023. Let me just get the, uh, the motion on the floor.
I can read it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution authorizing the submittal of up to three grant applications to the LISFF to, for the three resiliency and sustainability projects and authorizes the town manager to sign all required grant documents for such program. I so move.
Second?
Moved by Casiri, second by Westerville.
All right, thank you. So tonight's Megan's only second night here, so. So very briefly, Long Island Sound Futures Fund has issued a request for grant proposals for Long Island Sound Watershed. And we're looking to apply for, I want to really stress this, up to three grants. Right now, we have three projects that we've put together. We're still fleshing those out a little bit internally, but, and with some of the folks from the program that administered this, this fund. But that's what we're shooting for right now. Do you want to talk a little bit of the specifics to the projects?
Yeah, sure. That'd be great. Good evening, everyone. And just to add an additional detail or two about the solicitation. This year available, there's $10 million and potentially up to $12 million. So this is federal funding. It's Environmental Protection Agency funding. That gets managed by National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, or NIFWh, use the acronym. And the entire thing, as John said, is about restoring the health of the Long Island Sound. So they're looking for projects that support clean waters and healthy watersheds and thriving habitats, abundant wildlife and sustainable and resilient communities. So I'll dive into the first proposal idea, and these are roughly ordered in, in terms of strength. So this is the one that we feel strongest about. It would be to do a permeable pavement installation at both Shenacasee Golf Course and Sparkle Lake Conservation Area. So if this sounds familiar, it's essentially the rework of an ARPA proposal that you all reviewed called Learning Lots. So through this, and I should note, with ARPA, funding wasn't allocated specifically for the permeable pavement installation portion, but what was allocated was a purchase of the SUV with a vacuum truck attachment that's required to maintain this type of infrastructure. So now that we have the funding pathway to purchase that technology, it'd be really great to get the money in place to actually be able to do the implementation of the project. So at Shenacasee, it would be replacing the entire parking lot, which I understand is at the end of its useful life. And just with the large number of people that use that facility, just tremendous demonstration value, which would be a real strength of this proposal. At Sparkle Lake Conservation Area, the existing lot is very packed soil or dirt. It's, it's impervious essentially. It's packed so badly, it's badly rutted. It's actually oversized most likely. So we would be doing a definite infrastructure upgrade there. An interesting aspect of this proposal would be partnership with Yukon's College of Agriculture, Health and Natural Resources or CLEAR. So this was also something in the ARPA proposal where the Yukon CLEAR folks would be involved to help actually train our public works staff in how to install and maintain the permeable pavement. So it would help create a pathway to future installation. Because again, we'd be providing some education along with the, the installation. We would also seek funding to develop a maintenance protocol. And we did get preliminary feedback from NIFWh, National Fish and Wildlife Foundation. On each of these ideas, they let us know that this fit the intention of the solicitation and they liked the educational aspect of it. We would have to look into match specifics. Match is required from this grant program. However, it doesn't have to be a cash match. It can be in-kind services. Some federal programs are allowing ARPA funds to be used as match. So that would be ideal. We have to ask NIFWh if they are allowing that. But with the funding for the vacuum truck, that would be part of the match if they allow it. We could also use staff training time as match. And our estimated request, although very rough at this point, was probably about 500,000. And again, that was using numbers that were put together for the ARPA proposal. Proposal idea number two would be the design for a road stream crossing replacement at the intersection of Route 1 and Fishtown Road. So road stream crossings are bridges and culverts that go over streams and rivers and wetlands. And based on how they're designed, some may act as physical barriers to the movement of aquatic organisms like insects and fish, turtles, frogs, all of those things. So where this, oh, and I should also note, based on design, they can also cause or contribute to flooding issues. Where this particular project came from is Save the Sound has been working in multiple locations across the street to assess culverts based on, you know, their availability to allow that movement of wildlife through something called the North Atlantic Aquatic Connectivity Collaborative. And Save the Sound then, after doing a number of culvert assessments in Groton, gave us a report last year that outlined their highest five priority projects for us. And this culvert is priority number one. There are a number of issues with it in terms of, again, fish passage. It's a very unusual configuration of a culvert where one side has elliptical inlets and the other is a box configuration. It's also extremely long. It goes, if you're familiar with that intersection where the Valero gas station is, it actually, the Valero, part of the, the parking lot goes over it. And so there's, there's no light. There could be internal barriers. And this is habitat potentially for diadramus fish like brook trout. So our funding request here would be for the design and permitting of a replacement crossing using a stream simulation design culvert or a bridge that would be widened to increase hydraulic capacity. So the amount of water that's allowed to go through and also increase light. The feedback from NIFWh was favorable about the context. So essentially, NIFWh has funded Save the Sound doing some of this work previously to do the assessment. So it's probably favorable that then we're trying to push the result of those assessments forward. That's my two cents of, of those connections. We're not certain on match availability for this one. Of course, there's some staff time. I've contacted Save the Sound. I've also contacted the Nature Conservancy about their ability to potentially contribute some match. So we're trying to reach out to our partners and see what might be on the table and ask those questions. But that's definitely something that we would have to work through for this to be a successful proposal. And this request, again, super rough estimate would be 200,000. The final proposal idea would be to do a road vulnerability analysis and also an update to our town's road and drainage standard. The road vulnerability analysis would look at the susceptibility of our roads and streets to flooding. So thinking about things like sea level rise and storm surge, also flooding from extreme precipitation events, just nuisance flooding, sunny day flooding, quote unquote. And this idea of doing a vulnerability analysis is actually a priority action in the, the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation and climate adaptation plan that our council of governments has been developing. So this would help us make progress towards that. We would include considerations of how culverts might need to be replaced or retrofit based on flood mitigation purposes. And then the road and drainage standard aspect is that essentially our road and drainage standards were last updated in 2002. And so they're more than 20 years old. And so there are some updates that are needed. For example, they only allow for closed systems for the management of drainage. So approaches like green infrastructure, where you're using more nature-based techniques to absorb and, and filter stormwater aren't necessarily permitted based on how our current roads and drainage standards are, how they are put together. So our hope in packaging these two would, that would be a, a more holistic program that would allow us to understand our vulnerability, but then also update our standards that moving forward, we're able to pursue road projects that are more sustainable. I will say, the NIFWh response to this one is that it wasn't as good of a fit for the program. And I understand their point of view. They shared a little bit that when they do resilience projects, they really look for there to be like a dual benefit to wildlife and, and fish and that habitat part of it. So this being such sort of a gray focused project, although we'd be looking to build in aspects like green infrastructure potentially, it wa, it was a bit of a stretch. And so I don't think that this one is necessarily would make for a competitive proposal. Now, hearing their feedback, but we still wanted you all to know that this is something that we're, we're considering in terms of, you know, when we're looking at available grant programs, understanding the concerns of our roads and our drainage, hearing some of the same concerns from residents that you all do. It's something that we're definitely looking to see if there's funding that we could pursue to help support this type of project.
Thank you. Any questions? Counselor Boardwalk?
Um, thank you. I really appreciate the update and, and your efforts to look into ways to, you know, better improve our quality of life here in Groton and health and well-being is what I see. That's, uh, meantime, we're looking at these environmental standards. It's, you know, it's a long-term effect. And it seems like a lot of money, but, you know, for me, you, you can't put a price tag on life and, and how, you know, the environment runoff affects us. So it's definitely, definitely something I'm passionate about, very interested in the covert, you know, area by the gas station. You know, I'm no expert in any of this, but just from some of the stuff I've read preparing for the meeting, it would seem to me that if that needs to be widened as well, it could also potentially help with some drainage and road runoff over there. That's probably accumulating that we're not really aware of. Just by the fact that it's not having a proper flow for, for the capacity and the depth and the width not meeting the standard. So I did do some research on that and and definitely the wildlife aspect too. Also, if it's not the, to the, to the standard or the width that it's needed, the concerns of what I was reading is, is the pollutants and things not able to cycle through. So you're not filtering properly either, which is also affecting the fish and wildlife as well. So definitely really interested in that project and, and the many others. It, it seems, as for what you stated with that project, I guess my question is, since that was number one kind of on their list, it seems like that kind of had a little bit more of a, of an interest from the feedback.
Um, in terms of the NIFWh feedback?
Yeah, you said that they gave you like the top, the numbers.
Oh, yeah. So that was from the Save the Sound report. Save the Sound was like, you know, they gave us a list of their five essentially most problematic culverts or road drainage crossings that they prior, would prioritize for town action if we were able to move forward on any of them. So specifically out of that report, that was recommendation number one. But I think that really, that's a really strong statement that we can make if we apply to NIFWh, saying this was the number one recommended action from Save the Sound and we're serious about trying to move that forward to implementation.
I, I think that's, I think that's wonderful. Do we know of any flooding or anything in that area or any other concerns? Other than we know that it's not wide enough and it's affecting the wildlife and the fish there? Has there been any other concerns that, you know, maybe that? Has anyone else complained of flooding or not proper channeling there that we're aware of?
Um, when I reviewed this project with Public Works, they did make a comment of flooding in that area. I don't know any more details about it, but, but that, but yes.
Is, was there anything stated that the covert needs to be raised a little bit as well? Like, did that, was that something in the finding, you said about the width, was it also the height too?
With a lot of the culverts, over time and based on how sediments accumulate, having to do either elevation or clearing out of sediments is typical. So I wouldn't be surprised. I don't remember if that specifically was part of it, but we've already let Save the Sound know that this is something we were potentially considering and they were, of course, happy to hear that. So I have no doubt that if we went back to them and asked for more of that technical explanation of exactly what the issue is and how we can address it, that they would help provide us that information.
Yeah, thank you. I, I definitely would be interested in that when it comes forward. Cause just like I said, when I was preparing for this, I went down and I was just talking to some of the folks I know that live over there and they were talking about a little bit of the flooding over the years of living in that area. But I was wondering, they were wondering, would it have to come up a little bit to help with the widening? And I said, you know, good question. I'll ask. So it, it is definitely, you know, something to think about and I'm glad we have it on our radar and, and it's something that, you know, we're taking at least as an initiative to try to see what we can do. So thank you for all your efforts and they're all great projects and we'll see what happens from here. I guess the next steps, when will we, what's the timeline?
It's going to be a quick turnaround. Proposals are due to NIFWh by May 10th. And so we have between now and then to try to get proposals together and you know, there are definitely some things, some questions we still have to try to answer in terms of securing match and some of the other technical aspects of the proposal. And that's going to make a difference, I'm sure, in which of the three we move forward.
Uh, so my next question, is there a chance that not all three, you might end up doing one or two of these or maybe just one?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you for everything. I'm really excited to see the outcome of this.
Thanks.
Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here. So I just have questions on the funding. So when you say that it's going to be 500,000 for the permeable pavement and stormwater, you're applying for 500,000?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And same thing with the 200,000 for the culvert redesign?
Correct.
Okay. And did you give us an amount for the third applicant?
My apologies. I believe it's also 200,000, yeah.
200,000? Okay.
Those were very rough estimates.
Understood. Thank you. And then in our description, it says LISFF requires applicants to contribute non-federal matching cash funds and/or in-kind services valued at a minimum of 25 matching cash funds and/or in-kind services valued at a minimum of 25% of the funding request. So you're saying that we don't need to have the match now, and also we could do it in volunteer time materials and services donated?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, right now, we're not asking for any money for match.
Okay.
We're doing the best that we can to try to find the match. So there are, you know, whether it's this grant or others, there are a lot, there's a lot of money out there. The tricky part is always coming up with the match, so we try to get as creative as we can with that, but sometimes we need to come to you all and ask for match, too. This one right, where we are now, we're trying to see what we can come up with, but not at this point in time are we asking for any cash contribution from the town to come up with.
Understood. I think these are great, worthy projects. I just wanted to clarify for the public about the funding sources. Thank you so much.
Council Borlon?
I just had one other question. That culvert that you were speaking about with the size issue, that falls into what bigger body exactly?
The basin name, I forget, it's like the mid-shore basin, it doesn't have a particularly specific name. It is Eccleston Brook, I believe that flows through there.
And have we seen any effects on that far end? Like, I think, I'm one of those people that looks down the line, you know, because if you're having a problem there, you'll see the effects on the other side, you know, if something is not flowing right or, you know, could be causing a contaminant. Has there been any testing at the far end that we're aware of or any other, have we had any other town things or anyone saying, like, there's been concern down here in any nature?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero standing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On to setting RTM annual meeting date for FYE 2024 town budget. It's on page 103. I make a motion to recommend a resolution setting the annual budget meeting of the representative town meeting on Monday, May 1st, 2023 at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Borlon. This one's pretty straightforward. If anyone has questions. Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero standing. On to FYE 2023 fourth quarter transfers. Okay, and that should be page 104.
I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the FYE 2023 fourth quarter transfers and refer those transfers over $10,000 to the RTM.
Second, Jacome.
Moved by Cassiri, seconded by Jacome. And we've got a list here of fourth quarter. Any questions?
Just a report David McBride just arrived.
Okay. Council McBride has arrived at 7:22. Council Borlon?
Yes, I just had a quick question. Is that an estimate number or the exact number for legal services and assessments?
Estimate, we won't know until the end of the year what it actually is.
Okay, and then...
And I should point out on public safety, that's not all of the, that's not all Gold Star response. Some of it's just recent overtime that's coming in a little higher than expected. I think for last Friday, they calculated a little over 2,500 for overtime, but then there might be some more coming up from some meetings, is my understanding, so there could be some more, but it's to generally cover overtime.
Do you have, like, you know what, like, I know this form we have doesn't have a lot of, ton of detail as to exactly like what, that's why I was asking, like, you know, the FOI thing, like, the breakdown, there's nothing really additional here, just?
Yeah, we get a monthly bill and depends, you know, just like we received, sorry, I should keep, just like we received the FOIA complaint last week, well, that could be another $5,000 by the end of the, depending how quickly it goes, you know? So it's hard to know until you actually receive the bill. There's a, what we do is we look at the earlier months and try to extrapolate what is the likely amount, so it should be pretty close at least, and I look at it and finance looks at it. And the majority of the overage is more, there is about $35,000 over for FOIA, but it's mostly labor and because we have four of our union agreements this year, but also assessment is over significantly, too, just, I imagine, related to revale, so a lot of things hit at once.
Thank you for explaining.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, so I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero, oh, nine in favor, zero opposed, zero standing. All right. On to approving FYE 2024 budget. And that's on page 109. I make a motion to recommend a resolution approving the FYE 2024 budget.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Borlon. Council Borlon?
I just, can we just speak a little of this into the record, just for general purpose? Just, you know, what we're looking at of increase, just to kind of, you know, put it on the record of what, where we're at?
As you may recall, my original budget was set to proposed at $149,398,180, excuse me, which was a 4.5% increase or 6.4 million roughly over the current year's budget. The mill rate, if everything went as proposed, including 4.5 million of fund balance usage, would go from 21.28 to 22.24. With council changes, it reduced the proposed budget by $412,040 total net, bringing the budget down to 148,000, 148 million, I wish, 986,140, which is a 4.2% increase or a little under 6 million from the current budget. 4.3% instead of 4.5% increase in mill rate from 21.28 to 22.20, still using 4.5 million, and I do anticipate that'll change more as we get into the RTM process.
So my question for the town manager, and it's not like saying that you don't or disagree, but is there anywhere that you think that, you know, moving forward, that maybe there should be still some cuts, or maybe do you think that we're using too much of the fund, unassigned fund balance? I mean, I think it's, I think, you know, I appreciate your budget you presented, you know, you do it at a certain point in the year when things aren't necessarily happening that are happening now.
Yeah, we start in October.
It's a little bit of a foreshadowing, so it's hard. And then the council now, I mean, there's some things now that maybe certain councillors might feel differently about moving, you know, because things have changed, but, I mean, it's pretty sound, but is there, do you think that we should only use, you know, not as much fund balance? Or do you think more, or is there any areas?
I definitely don't think more. I'm comfortable with the 4.5, and plus, you'll get another shot at this once it goes through the RTM process and you get the final budget, because I'm sure it'll likely reduce some more. It'll come back to the council, you get to, actually, this is like a holding one, you'll get to actually set the final mill rates as well as fund balance usage at that time, so the end of May.
So you're, you know, obviously, you said yours was like a foreshadow, and then there's been some change, you're comfortable so far with the process, and you think we're in the right track?
Yeah.
We'll wait to see where it ends with RTM?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Franco?
Thank you. We are on page 109, am I correct? We're approving FYE 24 budget, is that correct?
Yes.
It says the budget information will be reviewed by the finance director, De Morrison, so are we getting a presentation from her on what the budget information is?
Well, I just gave it instead of her. Do you have anything to add?
Because what you, I'm just curious, because on the next page is basically what Mr. Burke just said, and that's for computation of the tax rate.
Well, and if you look in the packet, you'll actually see all the changes made to departments and CIPs. Are you looking for, I just gave the information instead of her, are you looking for anything else?
No, I just didn't know we're gonna approve the budget, which is like what we set the dollar amounts for everything, is that correct?
Correct.
Right, so that's what I was wondering, like, I thought, I thought that, I'm just confused at which one we're talking about. Are we doing the computation for tax rates, or are we doing?
Just the budget amount right now, just the 140, the 100 and, what is it, it's lost my place, 148,986,140, which is, if you look on page 112, that's what the bottom line is after, after the council's changes with CIPs. The council had cut 625,000 out of CIPs, but then added 212,960 for various department changes, including public safety, executive management, public safety being the sign, the speed sign, executive management adding in the funds for that position added recently, the part-time one, parks and rec for the maintainer, the extra bit for aquatic bridge fire under pilot, as well as that position for human resources. So when you take the 625,000 cut with the 212,960 addition, the difference is $412,040, bringing the budget down to 148,986 and $140.
Is that all your questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to know what the finance director had to say, so, and why it was written that way, we're gonna hear from the finance director. All right, I guess that answers it. Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, carries nine in favor, zero opposed, zero standing. On to computation of tax rate for general fund FYE 2024, page 110. I make a motion to recommend a resolution computing the tentative tax rate for the general fund FYE 2024.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Borlon. And a lot of this, we just covered in the last discussion. Seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero standing. On to computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove FYE 2024.
I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution computing the tentative tax rate for Mumford Cove FYE 2024, ISO move.
Second.
Moved by Cassiri, seconded by Borlon. Council Franco?
Thank you. So we don't have to actually say these what they are in our motions, it's just a general broad overview?
And if you look, we have, immediately following this meeting, we have the special council meeting, and that's where we'll actually set it, but for the Mumford Cove, the mill rate would be, what is it, .28 mils? And we'll actually read out a resolution following the Cowell meeting.
All right, this just seems different for some reason than previous meetings where I remember us actually reading these out, so I just had questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero standing. On to computation of tax rate for Groton Sewer District FYE 2024.
I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution computing the tentative tax rate for the Groton Sewer District for FYE 24, so move.
Second.
Moved by Jacome and seconded by Borlon. Council Franco, is that a hand?
No, I'm sorry, I'll take it down.
Okay.
I just don't fully understand what we're passing.
So this is, this is .36 mils for the Groton Sewer District Fund, and I just looked at last year's Cowell agenda items, it's written the same way, however, I do take your point, and I, next year, we'll put in the, I failed to catch that, because we, you know, stand what we've been doing over the years, but I do think it should be done that way. So next year, we will change the formatting of those motions.
Okay, because the motion we're passing right now is just a motion, compute the tentative tax rate, that we're allowing somebody to calculate it, basically. Is that correct?
Right, and then you'll do the resolution in just a little bit.
But, just as, I'm sorry, this is just like formality, but don't you normally at the Cowell have to pass something to bring it to the town council? And I mean, a resolution?
This is what we've used every year since Cindy was here, so we just continued that. This is the exact same format we've always used, but we will change it for next year.
Thank you.
Yeah, so just for clarity, all of the mill rates that we are, the computations, they're all on page 110, right under tentative tax rate impacts. General fund is 22.2, Mumford Cove is 0.28, and sewer district is 0.36.
Correct, I have seen those, I was just, the motion itself is just a resolution to compute the tentative tax rate, that's why I'm wondering what we're actually asking. So thank you, if that's fine, then we'll go forward. Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero standing. On to other business. I'll extend a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn by Council Cassiri, seconded by Council Jacome. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we are adjourned unanimously at 7:36.
Yeah, we're not done yet.
I'm assuming GMTV is still good. I'll call to order the Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, special council meeting to order at 7:37. Is the town clerk here?
The town clerk had to leave the meeting, she was on Zoom.
No worries. All councillors are present. On to new business. Setting the RTM annual meeting date for FYE 2024 town budget. It should be on page two. I'll make a motion recommending a resolution setting RTM annual meeting date on the FYE 2024 town budget, whereas section 9.3.1 of the Groton Town Charter requires that the town council determine the date for the annual budget meeting of the representative town meeting, now therefore be resolved that the annual budget meeting of the representative town meeting will be held on Monday, May 1st, 2023 at 7:00 p.m. at the Groton Senior Center, 102 New London Road, Groton, Connecticut.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, and seconded by Borlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. On to approving FYE 2024 budget. This is page three. I recommend a resolution approving budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024. Resolve that the budgets for the various funds here and after set forth are there, are hereby approved and adopted, and the amounts on the total appropriation line are hereby appropriated for the functions specified, and the amounts listed under the heading Financing Plan are hereby established as approved budget estimates for the types, the type of revenues specified, and include all estimated FYE 2024 cash revenues except FYE 2024 current property taxes, which will be estimated for budget purposes by separate resolution. When the FYE 2024 tax rate is set and further, that a complete detailed document indicating all function appropriations is hereby made a part of this record and shall be submitted to the town clerk for public record for budgets as follows. General fund, golf course fund, sewer operating fund, solid waste fund, Mumford Cove Special Taxing District Revaluation Fund, Recreation and Senior Activities Fund, Barwitt CT, Sewer District Fund, Capital Reserve Fund, Fleet Fund, Technology Replacement Fund, Human Services Assistance Fund, so moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Jones. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
I can read the next resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
I will make a motion for 2023-312, computation of tax rate for general fund FYE 2024. I will make a motion to adopt a resolution computing a tentative tax rate for FYE 2024 to pay expenses appropriations approved in the general fund budget as adopted by the town council. Whereas the town council adopted on April 25th, 2023, a general fund budget providing for expenditures, appropriations, or expenses totaling 148,986,140, and estimated cash revenues exclusive of FYE 2024 current property taxes totaling Be it resolved that a tax rate of 22.20 mills is hereby determined as required by Chapter 9 of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following computations. Total general fund appropriations per budget approved by council, 148,986,140, less general fund cash receipts exclusive of FYE 2024 current property taxes, 41,977,599, less the amount to be appropriated from the unassigned fund balance, 4,500,000. Amount to be raised from property taxes, 102,508,541. Amount computed as follows, 102,508,541 divided by the net assessed valuation before Board of Assessment adjustments of 4,669,389,733 divided by 98.9% collection rate multiplied by 1,000 equals 22.20 mill rate. I so moved.
Second.
Moved by Casiri, seconded by Borlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. On to computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove FYE 2024.
I agree, 2023-313, computation of tax rate for Mumford Cove FYE 2024. Whereas the town council adopted on April 25th, 2023, a Mumford Cove District Fund budget providing for expenditures, appropriations, and expenses totaling 21,321, and estimated cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2024, current property taxes totaling zero. Resolve that a tax rate of 0.28 mill be hereby determined as required by Chapter 9 of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following computations. Total Mumford Cove District Fund appropriations per budget approved by council, 21,321, less estimated amount to be appropriated from unassigned fund balance, zero dollars, less cash receipts exclusive of current property tax, zero dollars, amount to be raised from property tax, 21,321. Amount computed as follows, 21,321 divided by net assessed valuation of 77,128,50 before Board of Assessment adjustments divided by 99.4 collection rate multiplied by 1,000 equals 0.28 mill rate. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by Borlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Motion to adjourn?
We got one more.
I'll read the next one, ma'am.
You skipped one.
Okay. Computation of tax rate for Groton Sewer District.
Resolution computing a tentative tax rate for FYE 2024 to pay expense appropriations approved in Groton Sewer District Fund budget as adopted by the town council. Whereas the town council adopted on April 25th, 2023, a Groton Sewer District Fund budget providing for expenditures, appropriations, or expenses totaling 1,310,445, and estimated cash revenue exclusive of FYE 2024, current property taxes totaling 9,680. Be it resolved, the tax rate of 0.36 mills is hereby determined as required by Chapter 9 of the Groton Town Charter and based on the following computations. Total Groton Sewer District Fund appropriations per budget approved by council, 1,310,445, less estimated amount to be appropriated from unassigned fund balance, 400,000, less cash receipts exclusive of current property taxes, 9,680. Amount to be raised from property taxes, 1,107,65. Amount computed as follows, 1,107,65 divided by net assessed valuation, 3,724,185,170 before Board of Assessment adjustments and excludes motor vehicle divided by the 99.7% collection rate multiplied by 1,000 equals 0.36 mills. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jacome, seconded by Borlon. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Counsel Borlon.
Second.
Seconded by Jones. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. We are adjourned unanimously at 7:46.
Nice work, everyone.